It's five thirty, so a call to order this meeting for Monday, February twenty eighth. Carl, would you start us off with a roll call, please?
Councilmember Ronan. Remley.
Present.
Lunsman.
Present.
Reif.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Reinbold. Langer. Rux.
Present.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Present. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. First order of business will be to approve this week's agenda. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Got a motion from Councilman Remley and a second from Councilman Johnson, if that's all right. You guys basically spoke in tandem there. I would, any changes to that from anyone? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. Motion does carry. Next, we'll approve last week's minutes for the meeting of February twenty second. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Remley and a second from Councilman Lunsman. Would all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. Motion does carry. Move along to our consent calendar, as no one has spoken up for our open forum. In our consent calendar, we've got four items here today. Can I get a motion to approve our consent calendar?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Rux and a second from Councilman Reif. Carl, would you give us a roll call on this one, please?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
We'll abstain from this one, but the motion does carry. We'll move along to old business, where we've got the possible second reading and final adoption of ordinance twenty-two oh-one oh-one, which permits certain dwellings in I two unrestricted industrial districts. Joe, anything new on this one?
Uh, no, nothing changed since the last meeting.
Take a motion for that, uh, the possible second reading, then.
Move to approve.
And second.
Got a motion from Councilman Remley and a second from Councilman Johnson. Has anyone got anything to contribute on this one?
Do I do have a question?
Go ahead, Dave.
Why, why again are we moving to change an industrial area to, uh, somebody living in it? Is there a particular reason why we would want somebody to live in an industrial designated area?
One of the first things, we already found out there is some of that going on. And so to, to kind of make some of the things that have happened, uh, and then maybe open up some other opportunities for some expansion opportunities.
But if I remember reading the arti, I mean, I went back in and read the statute, it's, it, it, when it was created, it grandfathered a bunch of those in from quite a few years ago, and now we just missed it? Or we're gonna change the laws because somebody broke the law?
Well, I don't know if I want to say broke the law. There were a couple of things that we, we, um, I don't know if they were ever correctly permitted, that might have, might have gotten in there, that once they were, they're, they're actually kind of good. Where the cooperative business, it wasn't just, hey, I want to live in this, but it's that, uh, it, it's a good business model, and it, it allows for some of the essential services to, to go forth.
But wouldn't that be a different designation, then? Instead of leaving it industrial, then? Wouldn't it be better to change that designation versus changing the whole designation for industrial?
There, there's a good argument for that, but then we end up with spot zoning, so it's kind of a six of one, half a dozen of the other.
It just seems like we're gonna appease people for something that they, that whether it was our fault or their fault, but we're, we're gonna change an ordinance to fit what's, what's wrong?
Um, not entirely. Um, some of it will open up some opportunities for some growth.
For growth in, for people to live in the industrial zoned areas doesn't seem right to me. I, I, I guess I can't get, I can't get the co- concept down of why we would want to use that designation to become part of a livable area, isn't that kind of the, what, what happens when they start complaining about noise and about, uh, trucks coming in or different things? May not happen in this one, but what about the next one? Are we gonna, how, how is that gonna change those things?
I don't know that it will. I don't know that we'll see that big of an influx in there. There's really not a lot of properties that this would apply to.
I, I do understand it, but what I'm saying is that if we do change this one, and then some others change, and then all of a sudden they want it to be a residential zone, so that they can have their residential neighborhood, so to speak, and then now we have to enforce the rules for the neighborhood in a industrial area where it's supposed to be, I, I would assume industrial's loud, you got deliveries twenty-four hours a day, you got trucks coming, and then they want to have their residential also? Do we change the rules again, then, to appease those people?
I wouldn't think so, because I think the primary reason has to be industrial, and that's one of the reasons not to rezone it is, uh, is residential.
I, I guess I just don't see it, and at this point, unless somebody can convince me otherwise, I won't vote for it again.
Councilwoman Langer?
Well, I think too, what you're saying, changing, I mean, if you're making the choice to have your residence in an industrial area, then you realize, like, this isn't saying, like, we're gonna treat this residential area like a residential area in regards to everybody industrialized, like, you cannot operate after a certain time, because like, this is them understanding, they're putting their home in an area that's industrial. It's like what you're asking about, and I could be wrong interpreting what you're asking, but we, like, they're not gonna make a fuss about, like, this doesn't allow residential type.
Maybe these people won't, but somewhere in, I'm looking in the future. I, I just don't see why, if you want to live, live in your home, it shouldn't be in the industrial.
Well, it doesn't allow for them to do that. I mean, it's allowing them to permit certain dwellings in this area. It's not saying because you're doing that, now you can classify this little residential area and cause all these issues for the industrial part. It's basically saying, because you have this industrial place, but you also have an area where you can live, you can do that legally, but you're not, I mean, like, it doesn't say, now you can say where there's a noise ordinance, because I live here, and so you better not have a train go by, like, I mean, that's, that's not what this does.
And, and I, I do get that to a point, uh, but yet we have designated zones for reasons, and one of the reasons for industrials to not have people living there. And if you want to live, we, we have designated areas for living, and industrial's not one of them. To me, that just doesn't make any sense.
I think that it's, I think that it's easy to have everything in a little box, but this is a situation where it, we, where we found that somebody is able to make an area where they live within their business, that they operate twenty-four seven, and so it allows, and it's a partner that we work with as well, and I just think that it, it allows, it, everything isn't in a box, I guess. I guess it's nice to act like we can say, this is residential, this is this, this is that, but it allows for us to make changes in order to make things work. And I think it's, it doesn't have to be, if there's residential areas, you have to live there. I mean, they're not asking for us to make it a residential area. They're just asking us to make a permit within certain dwellings.
But we also have to look at the big picture, too, I think, is that if we start, um, making rules fit what somebody already either broke or we didn't catch, do we do that for everything around town, and then just change everything, or what?
Is that we always say that, is that, is we can't do something, because then it means we have to do it for everybody, and that's not the case. We can do certain things for certain situations that work, and that's where I think I disagree with a lot of things, is, is we don't have to set a precedence and then always do that, like, we can look at certain situations as adults and as a council and say, okay, we can do this because it makes sense for our situation that we're in.
Councilman Rux, what have you got?
So I sit here and look at this, kind of similar to what we did with our zoning ordinances for homes, where we allowed a little bit of, uh, expanded use for in-home businesses. Let's say you have someone who has a welding shop, and they have a big enough space, and they put their home either at the back or, or, you know, right next to it, you know, however they do it, or whatever, um, in the same, as long as it's in the same building, it will allow it. I sit here and watched a show on, uh, on YouTube on artworks cooperatives, where basically you have people living, yet maybe doing welding and numerous other things where they're living. You know, as we sit here and look at, um, buildings that may need to be repurposed, there may be additional ideas that maybe we're not aware of that may come forward. But I see this as no different, as allowing someone who's running a business in their home, allowing them to run a business in a home. Now we're just saying, hey, under certain circumstances, you can have a home where your business is. So as long as it meets these criteria, not saying that you're gonna have, oh, guess what? You know, you have deliveries happening in the building next door, we're now gonna violate you for the noise ordinance. I don't think that's gonna be a question to me. It's like, you chose to live there if you want quiet and peaceful and, and, yeah. We have residential for that, so, or multifamily, but I, I consider that a similar thing.
I'd like to make one quick point, is probably maybe the only person that lives in a, in a retrofitted commercial space. I, uh, I moved into a commercial building that's been renovated into a residence. I love it. I wouldn't hesitate to move into some of these in, similar buildings that are, just happen to be classified as industrial. Comes with some disadvantages. My kids have no yard of our own. Um, we hear bar traffic at nighttime. We hear a lot of vehicles rumbling by when a lot of residences are probably in their quiet time, but it's a trade-off that I was willing to make, and I, I like it, and I think that it's a, it's a growing trend nationwide. And we're actually kind of late to the, late to the fight, I think, in terms of that. So I think that retrofitting old, cool buildings with good bones is, is something that's definitely interesting to people everywhere.
And I don't disagree with that. We have that all the way down, down Main Street. We have commercial and we have residential above. That's not a new concept, or what, is to me, anyway, in my mind, and I could be off-base with all of this. We're turning an industrial area, or at least designated industrial, into a residential area. And that's where I, I have some problems with, and that's just my own personal statement, whatever everybody else believes is, is your own belief. But, uh, the commercial area, get it, understand it. I wouldn't want to myself, but so be it. But we're also looking at an industrial zoned area, and I'm not sure what the further con, it may work for this particular one, but we changed the full ordinance, then what is the consequences for tomorrow, next week, next month, next year, when we forgot to think of something, because we just, we're narrow, we're thinking about one or two, and then all of a sudden, these other ones think outside the box, and now we're stuck with that? Then what do we do? Do we change the ordinance to prevent them from doing something we didn't really want them to do, then? That, that's just my, my own thoughts, my own two cents, and I'll be quiet, but I will still vote against it.
Councilman Reif had something to contribute, and then Johnson.
I do think there are some safeguards in this. Um, you might argue that they're not adequate, but the dwelling can occupy more than forty percent of the gross floor area, and the person living there has to own the building. So in, in my view, most of the time, that building owner is gonna be the person who owns the other sixty percent and is running the industrial-type business, um, so they're gonna be well aware of the issues of trucks coming and going and all the other noise parts, because that's their business. I, I, I feel like the way this is written does protect us. Uh, there's no rental. You can't rent out the property. You're not gonna have unsuspecting families renting these, um, residences out, and they're shocked that it's loud. So I feel like the ordinance is written in a way that I, that I can support, and I don't feel it's gonna lead to a lot of extra issues down the road, personally.
Yeah, I think that there's some real crossover between the commercial and industrial, like, some of our industrial district may as well be commercial. You know, it was a part of the original core district of commercial here. They just kind of redrew it at some point to be industrial. But, uh, Councilman Johnson has something.
I was curious if between, um, your research, Joe, and maybe input from Brett, if we can quantify how many, um, establishments there are like this, where we have, uh, dual residence and a business operation?
I think two or three.
I don't have a definitive number.
Yeah, it's, it's not large.
Not large, okay. Yeah, I mean, I see this as an acceptable thing. Um, we are accommodating, um, what could happen in the future, perhaps some crossover, but in the main, we are accommodating some that exist that we've come across, and then we're grandfathering them, and I think it's, it's sensible. I think it's okay. Uh, I also agree that, you know, um, there's gonna be a limited application. There aren't gonna be a lot of this.
Councilman Rux.
And I, and I think this, this doesn't mean that it's gonna happen, because this is only for the city to allow a possible special exception after a public hearing, and the Board of Zoning Adjustment could set other conditions on that that may not be in the ordinance. So this is only allowing a special exception. Again, it has to be posted, it gets a hearing. We're not saying you can do this. This still has to go to the zoning board of adjustment, so.
But, but this already did go in front of them, and they said no. They were against it, so then, the, the, why were they against it? Why did they go, flatly go against this anyway?
Because I don't think it's a unallowed use under the current ordinance as it stands. So, you know, like you say, it's, you know, if it's not allowed, I mean, the Board of Zoning Adjustment probably is like, you know what? There, there's no wiggle, no wiggle room for us, and so, once we change it, this means it may be allowed, but doesn't mean it will be allowed.
All right, good discussion, everybody. Uh, thanks for bringing your ideas forward. This is the most discussion we've had in our ordinance in quite a while. So Carl, would you give us a roll call vote for the second reading on this ordinance, please?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
No.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the possible second reading and final adoption of ordinance twenty-two oh-two oh-two, which modifies industrial waste treat, pre-treatment program, and I don't see Peggy here, so Joe, are you gonna tell us about that?
Um, I think Ron is.
Oh, Ron, you're back.
Yep, I'm back. I, I did want to mention one, one additional thing to this, uh, the council, of course, approved it, approved first reading last, last week without any discussion, but I did want to point out to everyone that there is a provision in there that would require the effective date of this to be after our city manager has verified that it's been either approved by the Secretary of the Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources, or that they don't need to approve it, and I'm sorry that I couldn't be clearer with that, because as we were getting in the final stages of this, persons at DA and R wondered aloud whether they actually had to approve this, even though it looks pretty clear to us that they do need to approve it. So that's why we have that additional language at the very end of the ordinance, uh, for a verification by our city manager. But other than that, uh, there have been no comments, nothing additional, and staff would recommend approval.
Move approval.
Second. Got a motion from Councilman Rux and a second from Councilman Johnson. Does anyone have any questions, discussion on this one? Carl, give me a roll call.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the possible approval of a letter of agreement with Helms and Associates to provide miscellaneous engineering services to the city of Aberdeen and our regional airport, and authorize the city manager to sign that agreement. Rich told us all about it in depth last week. Any changes, Mr. Krokel?
Yes, the, uh, reasons was tabled was that, uh, Councilor Ronan had some concerns with the, uh, limitation of liability.
Oh, that's right.
Being at fifty thousand. Um, I visited with Mr. Bob Babcock from Helms and Associates, and he agreed to raise that, uh, limitation up to one hundred thousand.
Okay, so I guess the first thing we ought to do is, I guess it was tabled just for a week, so we can just pick it up as it is. Any, if one of we get a motion in our second, then we can ask Rich if we've got any questions. Was, was anyone willing to carry this one?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilman Rux. Do we have any questions on the amended language?
Ron, are you good with everything that's put together now?
I appreciate that this got tabled, you know, I was gone last week, but, uh, this was something that had come up a couple of years ago. I think we did a similar one, and you'll see that the total amount of the contract is not to exceed seventy-five hundred. And while these limitations of liability are not, uh, necessarily something that we would like, if they're there, we want them to be reasonable. And with the potential exposure, uh, Helms did agree to raise their potential limit to, to a hundred thousand rather than the fifty thousand. We'll try to keep an eye on these, uh, in the future. I don't know that we'll ever be able to eliminate them, but we will make sure that the total, uh, potential limitation is proportionate to the total amount of the contract. So I would, uh, say that this is satisfactory and, and ask that the council go ahead and approve it.
Well, we've got our motion and our second. Do we have any other questions or comments from anyone in the council? Carl, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Aye, motion does carry. Thanks for joining us. Rich, I appreciate the additional legwork on that one. We will move along to our possible first reading of an ordinance twenty-two oh-two oh-one, which regards the transfer of a taxicab license. Oh, Ron, why don't you pick this one up from there? My email or my internet's not loading properly here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is a bit of a housekeeping. I don't know if the council was aware, but a few months ago, the city of Watertown ended up having to amend an ordinance when they were presented with a prot, a, a, uh, protestation by a public interest law firm regarding a certificate of necessity, necessity for some set taxicab licensing in that city. So it caused me to take a look at things, and I see that we have one, uh, not, not as problematic as Watertown's, but it certainly is one that we can clean up. We also have another, uh, certificate of necess, necessity requirement with our, with our ambulance service, but I am not recommending a change to that. That is something we need to retain. So, uh, with the, uh, with the taxicab, however, I would, uh, recommend that the council, uh, pass first reading of the, of the, uh, ordinance to eliminate the certificate of necess, necessity from a transfer of a, of a taxicab license.
Move approval.
Second. I've got a motion from Councilman Rux and a second from Councilman Johnson. Does anyone have any questions for our city attorney on this one? Go ahead, Josh.
So what exactly are we fixing here? I know, it got a little buried. What, what I had made is thought initially was a, was a relatively easy change. Mary Campton came down and told me that we could fix some other things while we're at it, so you'll see, but it's the very last language, very last sentence in the, what was the original portion of the ordinance, that says, "No public vehicle license," you see that deleted part, "shall be transferred from one owner to another except after a finding of convenience and necessity." That's the language that's objectionable. We're making sure that we get that cleared out. But what we're saying is that you need to, uh, you, you cannot have a ta, uh, a transfer of one of these licenses from one owner to another. They'll need to start out with a new license now, and also that you can add a taxicab or a motor bus or replace one without having to get a new license. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we've got our motion and our second. Carl, would you give us a roll call on this first reading, please?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got a recommendation to accept bids for water main, frames, grates, hydrants, and sewer pipe, and to authorize the city manager and finance officer to sign the necessary documents after that approval by the city manager. Robin, what can you tell us about that?
Well, if you scrutinize the bid schedule very closely, you'll see we only have one bidder. This bidding climate is very interesting, and, uh, Jeremy had a conversation with one of the, uh, potential bidders, and he said that they are only allotted, in, in his particular case, they are only allotted so much pipe and materials that they can bid this year, especially in the PVC realm. The PVC piping, uh, I'm assuming is, you know, being gobbled up every place, contractors, whoever can get them right now. There's, uh, potentially a lot of money out there for infrastructure projects, so we're competing against a lot of different forces right now. And this is just for our typical maintenance-type work. Uh, we're thankful that we did have a bidder. Corn Main did supply a good share of our, our materials on, I think, all of A and B last year. To give you an example of where we're at in this bidding climate for four-inch PVC pipe, we have a bid price this year of five dollars and sixty-one cents. Last year was two dollars and thirty-eight cents, so more than doubled. Uh, we did have one particular pipe, or one particular fitting, uh, for a twelve-inch pipe that now is two thousand dollars and was under six hundred last year, from the same bidder. So it is, it is, some of the numbers are astounding. On the metal side, where we've got the metal fittings, the valves, things like that, it's not near as significant, but, uh, these prices are higher than what we experienced last year. But we are thankful we've got something, so we can, can continue to do our maintenance, so we recommend approval of the bids from Corn Main.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilman Rux. Does anyone have anything for conversation on this one? Questions? Carl, give us a roll call.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the recommendation to accept bids for aggregates. Option A, an amount of seventy-four thousand. Option C, an amount of eighty-four thousand, from Jensen Rock and Sand, as well as to authorize city manager and finance officer to sign those documents. Robin, what can you tell us about this, uh, set of bids?
We did have more bidders this year than we had last year, and, uh, the price increase was, is there. You know, we're talking more in the realm of maybe fifteen percent versus the fifty or a hundred percent type range. We can live with fifteen percent. It'll, it'll fit within our budget. We just have to watch what we're buying a little more on some of the other things that, uh, uh, we, we just have to make sure we're keeping on top of the budget. So, uh, we recommend the approval of, uh, ANC to Jensen's and, and in the bid prices recommended here.
Move approval.
Second. Got a motion from Councilman Rux and a second from Councilman Remley. Any questions on this one? Carl, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the recommendation to accept bids for asphaltic concrete and surfacing repair mix, which is item number one, for the amount of fifteen thousand dollars, and items three and four, an amount of seven hundred and one thousand, one hundred dollars, both from Jensen Rock and Sand, as well as to authorize manager and finance officer to sign those documents. Robin?
Okay, well, these prices, once again, are a little bit higher than last year. Um, there's still things that we can manage within our budget. We, we have worked with Jensen's in the past. Uh, uh, it depends on which year we end up with Jensen's or Leans. Both bid, uh, it was very close. As you can see, they were a dime apart per ton, uh, for the hot mix that we typically get. So it, it was very competitive, and we do recommend being able to also purchase from Leans. We're recommending Jensen's, but when Jensen's are not able to supply, we can't shut our plant, our, our crews down for a week or two. So we have, in the past, purchased periodically from the other company, and, and, uh, we try to limit that, but at least our operation can continue, uh, because our construction season is short. So we recommend approval of Jensen's.
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Remley and a second from Councilman Lunsman. Any questions? Carl, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman?
Aye, motion does carry. Robin, thank you for the presentation. Appreciate the information on those items. We'll move along to our review and approval of claims and payroll. The bill is for this week, February twenty-eighth, and payroll is for February thirteenth through February twenty-sixth. In addition to payroll, it would include insurance, retirement, health, life insurance, et cetera. Can I get a motion to pay those bills, please?
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Rux and a second from Councilman Reif. Carl, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Langer?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next we've got our city managers' report with city manager Joe Goddard. Joe, what have you got tonight?
A, a very short one. It's, it's amazing. It's already, tomorrow will be March, um, and so the year is progressing along. Uh, here over the next few weeks, you'll hear some updates on some twenty-two projects and, and, and get some thoughts on that. Uh, but then also at the same point in time, within, oh, probably the next couple of staff meetings, the, I know the next one for sure, we'll, staff will start thinking about the twenty-three budget, because really, but when May gets here, uh, we're, we're pretty well into that process as well. So, uh, one year just barely gets started, and we're thinking about the next one. So lots of things going on. Uh, department heads are staying busy, and, uh, that's a good thing, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Joe, with that, I would take a motion to move to executive session where we can discuss some contract negotiations.
Move to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilman Reif to move to